Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It doesn't look like we had anybody signed up to speak. Vicki, I'll move on to approval of the minutes of the meeting held May 26, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. On to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and then a second on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. On to conflicts of interest. There were no new conflicts presented at this time. Now to the approval of the consent agenda, items seven A through D. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second from Mark Mearon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. On to the reports, the President. First, the South Dakota Department of Health MOU report. Dr. Valdez.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson, members of the board. My name is Benjamin Valdez, Vice President of Academic Affairs. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. I come to you to talk to you about a phenomenal opportunity that we have been approached by the South Dakota Department of Health. The South Dakota Department of Health has recently been awarded a $38 million grant over a two-year period of time from the Center for Disease Control to implement Community Health Worker Program in the state of South Dakota. The Community Health Worker Program is a program where they develop community health workers that become liaisons between individuals needing medical care or seeking medical care or under the care of a physician and community resources, whether it be assistance with finding childcare while they go to a doctor, to finding ability to get to from their appointments, all different types of resources, assistance with counseling, whatever those services an individual may need, these community health workers there to be that liaison between the healthcare community and the individual seeking assistance. Part of the opportunity that we have and have been approached by the Department of Health is that we actually develop a training program for community health workers. Part of the grant is this first year is first year rewarded, $140,000 that will help cover costs of developing the program for getting faculty aboard, curriculum needs, and get everything up and ready. The goal is that we have everything before the board here and the South Dakota Board of Technical Education by the end of the year for our new program beginning August of 2022. The new program and the guidelines that we've kind of worked out with the Department of Health, this is going to be a very short-term certificate. So one semester certificate, around 15 credits, where a student will be able to come in, become certified, and then go back out into community to work as a community health worker. The nice part of part of this grant of the $38 million is that the South Dakota Department of Labor, I'm sorry, Department of Health, in conjunction with the South Dakota Department of Labor, will be covering tuition costs for those that qualify for the first two years. So we have an opportunity to really provide a service to our community and to help increase opportunities and access to healthcare within all of South Dakota. The program, again, will look into hiring and several adjuncts that will start the process of developing the curriculum, developing the individual courses. There are several states that have community health worker programs in place, and we're working with the South Dakota Department of Health and their Community Health Worker Assessment Program to actually maybe even send them out to some of these states where they get to spend some time to realize what they're doing and see how it works and what's best for South Dakota as a team effort doing these different training opportunities. The goal ultimately is that we'll be able to service anywhere from 20 to 40 students per semester. So we're hoping to have this up and running. We are asking that the board authorize us to go into partnership with the South Dakota Department of Health, and President Griggs allowed to sign the memorandum of understanding, which will be coming forth here in the next week or so. I sent open for questions.
Well, once again, thank you for being nimble and adjusting to needs in the community. This sounds like an amazing program to help people navigate the systems that are there but maybe aren't, they're not aware of at the time. Does the Department of Labor have an idea of approximately what type of wage these CHWs will receive once they are entering into the workforce?
It will depend because in some of the rural communities, they're going to approach firefighters, paramedics, different individuals that may have additional certification and education to also serve when they have time, in addition to those that have had, that are maybe unemployed but have had issues in the past in getting them through. But they're estimating it'll be anywhere from $16 to $18, depending on certifications and everything could be a little bit more. They will be partnering with Sanford, with Avera, with Monument Health as they hire these individuals to even the first year to help cover salaries and everything as well. So we're hoping that it'll be a good opportunity.
That's awesome, especially with the tuition being covered as well that will help offset that.
Definitely.
I can, from experience, I can tell you the number of patients who struggle with the basic things like making, making an appointment or even making it to the follow-up appointment. And like you mentioned, it's transportation, it's childcare, it's miscommunication, it's language barrier, it's a number of things. And so I think this is a great way to try to bridge that gap with those patients and really help the community to become healthier and more knowledgeable about what's available. So very, very interesting program.
Thank you.
No further questions for Dr. Valdez. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the MOU as well as allow Dr. Griggs to sign the MOU with Department of Health?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Thank you. Dr. Griggs with the year-end report.
Good afternoon, board members. Congratulations, President Mickelson, for a third consecutive term here on the board. We do appreciate all of your help, but it, I know, takes a lot of extra time to work with the campus, and we certainly appreciate your help and board member writers' help in this past year, two years actually, as we go forward. And welcome to Board Member Mearon, and he'll be out on campus. We look forward to having you out on campus this week.
Two o'clock.
I thought what would be helpful is to provide the board with a quick overview and update on some of the good work that's happened on campus. Of course, this past year, we've been extremely focused on the pandemic and responding to the challenges that have arisen. But there were a lot of very good things that happened on campus in addition to, I think, a strong campus-wide response to the pandemic. In the fall, our degree-seeking students, actually, we were up 1%, slightly down about 3% in the spring, but overall, I think that's very strong and solid enrollment, especially because the National Student Clearinghouse and some data they've just released have indicated, again, two-year colleges being down 10.1%, I think, four-year universities down 3.4% or so. And so where we're at, I think, going into fall '21 here is in a, in a good position. If you look at who our students were, one of the more surprising outcomes again this past year was that we had 49% of the students are part-time now. When I started five years ago, it was 34%. So that number has steadily increased, and it really changes the dynamic, I think, in terms of, and what we need to do as a campus to respond to the needs of those students. So we'll be talking with you in the coming months on some initiatives that are underway in that regard. Also, a growing number of minority students that are on campus, not a large increase this past year, but a, but a slight increase, which is what we like to see, especially in a pandemic year. We're hoping that the good work that's occurred through the Avera Academy and Classrooms to Careers and some of those initiatives will also increase those numbers in future years for us. An important, often overlooked fact is that 14% of our students are from out of state. That was over 300 students this past year, and it's significant because if you look at our placement rate, very high this past year, 99% placement, almost full 100% placement, but 88% of our student graduates are staying in the state. So we are really a talent importer for the state of South Dakota, bringing in students from out of state, those students having success here and hopefully staying here and furthering their careers. Our fall-to-fall retention rate increased nicely from the previous year, which is always a positive, which you like to see. I think that's one of the areas we'll be watching very closely as we see increasing numbers of part-time students. Typically, those students are, have more challenges than maybe traditional age students with jobs and families and other issues sometimes that they are faced with to overcome. Another exciting note this past year is we've had five consecutive years of expanding Build Dakota Scholarship industry support, so growing our industry support for our Build Dakota Scholarship. And I know last month, we talked about our Build Dakota Signing Day with the photos there, and it was, again, another really well-attended and, and great day for our students and our industry partners. We also achieved some national rankings. We don't spend a lot of time talking about this, maybe as much as we probably should, but again, being recognized by the Aspen for 2021. A more recent recognition came from Niche.com, which is ranking of best community colleges, and we ranked 33rd out of 853 two-year schools. So I think that's an impressive number. Actually, South Dakota had three schools in the top 50 in that ranking. And then also, our LPN program achieved, and I think I've mentioned this before, but we're very proud of the fact that our LPN program ranked second out of 660 schools, I think it was, that, that throughout the Midwest, a very impressive ranking. Not to be outdone, our RN program ranked second in the country. They listed the top 15 schools in the country, and we were ranked second in terms of the RN program based on NCLEX and graduation rates and so forth. So the students are doing a tremendous job. I think our faculty are doing a tremendous job in healthcare, but not only in healthcare, but in all programs, and I think that's reflected in some of those, some of those national rankings. And maybe one that we're most proud of is that we were ranked eighth out of 596 two-year schools for economic mobility of our students. So students coming in, where they start, and then when they graduate and their economic or earning potential in terms of going forward. So that's an impressive number, and again, speaks to, I think, to the highly of the quality of the programs that we have. Dr. Valdez and the whole Academic Affairs team has been working very hard, and all of you have been involved as, over the past three years, we have brought 10 new programs forward. Really have to take a minute to reflect on that because a lot of work that goes into approving those programs at the local, state, and then through the Higher Learning Commission as well. And I think one thing that I'm particularly proud of is the fact that we have worked very collaboratively, again, with our industry partners to bring all of these programs forward. And frankly, we would not be able to bring several of those programs forward if it were not for the help and assistance of those industry partners. In the, on the slide, you can see the bold emphasis, as an example, in construction trades, you know, using, we do not have a residential construction lab on campus, so we're working with Habitat for Humanity in the fall, we're working out an agreement with the city for remodeling projects, renovation of city-owned facilities to help, and our students will use those facilities as our own labs, construction labs. Also, telecommunications tower technician program is moving forward and now is teleconstruction. But that program, we have, are using Vicor training facilities, and we actually have a meeting with NATE, the National Alliance of Telecommunication or Tower Erectors, I believe it is the acronym, and they are bringing in a large group, and Department of Labor is going to be there, and some out-of-state companies as well, working with Southeast and How, and also now, Lake Area Technical Institute is bringing forward an apprenticeship program. But how can we better market that program because of the high demand in that area? And then, of course, Vet Tech, we just had our signing ceremony, or I should say, our ribbon-cutting with the veterinary technician program, and we are using, with McCrossan's help and assistance, McCrossan's Ranch, using their large animal facilities for that program. And then Paramedic Science is just launching this fall, and we'll be using Sanford facilities to launch that program. So again, a lot of new programs, and I think that helps meet our mission, and our mission is meeting the workforce needs of the region, so how do we do that? Again, I wanted to bring special attention, a couple of photos here. The top photo is our Avera Academy students. That was taken last year, and then a more recent photo here of our Classroom to Career students at Washington High School, that was just taken this past spring semester here. And so those programs, there's some data for you, thanks to Anna Fisher's help at Southeast Tech pulling that information for you together. And this was a program, as you all know, that we started to go after and hopefully improve those numbers in terms of the 32, 34% of Sioux Falls School District high school graduates that do not continue on to any form of post-secondary education. And I think the numbers are impressive. You know, at Southeast Tech, some of those students, as you look on the slide, year one for the Avera Academy, so last year, 29% of those students graduating from that program came or enrolled that next fall at Southeast Tech, but 71% went to other colleges in addition to Southeast Tech. That's four-year colleges and universities, as well as going into the military. Classrooms to Careers, 39%, so a little higher that first year, a higher percentage of students coming to Southeast Tech, 30% going on again to USD, SDSU, and other state university, as well as the Augustanas and USF. So I think that is just a win-win for everyone involved in terms of providing access, creating more opportunities for those students. And you see the same thing this past year, even with a pandemic year, we were able to continue on with this program. The second year of the Avera Academy, we had 49% of those students enrolling at Southeast Tech this fall semester, and then also with the classrooms to careers, 32% enrolled at Southeast and over 40% at other colleges. So that's making an impact, and I think what we'd like to see is obviously growing those numbers. We've had meetings with both Sanford and Avera about that opportunity, so we're hoping to do that in coming years, and actually, we'll be meeting with both organizations tomorrow morning to talk more about that opportunity as well. Some other priorities for this past year, we launched, of course, our dental assisting program, getting the each dollar matched by the state for that program, and then for construction, to help our construction program in order to do those renovation projects with the city and other entities in the city, that we needed some type of mobile lab, and so we were fortunate to have Henry Carlson donate a trailer, our faculty and students converted that to a mobile construction lab, and that's what we'll be taking with us this fall, our students will, going out to Habitat and hopefully the city as well, city properties and so forth. And the, the graph in the bottom left-hand corner is just the phenomenal dollars that you see invested in Sioux Falls in terms of the growth in construction, commercial and residential. It's, it's pretty amazing, so we're hoping, again, to have our students be part of that. Some other programs, as I mentioned, the ribbon-cutting for the Vet Tech program. We also received support from the city of Sioux Falls, and we were able to, for our CDL program, purchase a, an additional semi for, that's an automatic, and to help with the demand for that program, class A driver's training. And none of these initiatives, again, you have a nice shot there of our Vet Tech lab. SDSU had some faculty members and some administrators come out for our ribbon-cutting, and I think they were actually kind of envious of that lab setting. Benjamin and his team did a great job working with some other colleges in terms of designing that facility, so we're anxious to make full use of that. And what is exciting, on the bottom of that slide, shows some of the programs that are already completely full with waiting lists, the electrician, Vet Tech, DMS, LPN, CNA, and then the other programs there, construction management, RN, dental assisting welding. They're already full, but we take additional students in case students don't show up, so we create more of a potential waiting list there too for those programs, and so those are filling up quickly as well. So nice to see that. Some other initiatives, we'll continue on now with working on the development, we're calling Phase Two of Avera Academy Classrooms to Careers, which is really about expanding outreach to our diverse student populations in the Sioux Falls region and area. A key part of that was the hiring just a few weeks ago of our Director of Diversity and Workforce Opportunity, Marcela Prokop, so we'll have her in here at some point in the near future. She's only on Week Two on campus, so we thought we'd give her opportunity to get acclimated a bit, but she's working hard on helping us develop some training for staff and faculty and students out at Southeast. But a number of initiatives tied to, now we see an increasing number of diverse students, how do we make certain that these students are successful once they arrive on campus? And some of the other programs that we've talked about, we're excited, that Neighborhood Revitalization Program, again, with the city and Habitat for Humanity. Benjamin and his team are also working with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society, Sioux Falls Community Health, the dental clinic with our dental assisting students now, so that is impressive, a lot of good work that's going on, and I think it's going to reap the benefits in terms of, not only for our students and the experience they have, but also the benefit through, in terms of these partnerships and helping individuals as we go forward in the city. One of the initiatives, we had a large planning meeting today, I think we had 26 or so faculty, staff, administrators that were on campus, they're part of their leadership of our Futures Committee, and we talked about our work plan for the coming year. And so we had a retreat a few weeks ago with the VPs, and we developed with the help of Rick Melmer, and Rick, you may know, he's a former USD administrator, and also he leads the South Dakota Leadership, Leadership South Dakota Program, providing strategic planning assistance for companies throughout the state of South Dakota and working with aspiring leaders. And we've been very fortunate the last couple of years to be working with Rick, and he's been out at Southeast Tech working with our senior leadership. But we also, again, just two weeks ago, had a retreat and developed our work plan for the coming year, so we shared that draft today with our Futures Leadership Team, and then we'll bring that forward in August to the whole campus. But part of that, one of the seven initiatives that we have established for this coming year is the development of a new strategic plan. And so right now, we are operating under a plan that was developed in 2016, and it was a five-year plan, which I think has served us well, but we're at the end of that plan now. We've reached out to the Higher Learning Commission and our liaison as to whether or not we should be, you know, begin the planning process for a new strategic plan or if we should wait until after our comprehensive visit in 2023. And the individuals that we have consulted with from the Higher Learning Commission have all agreed and said, no, you need to, you need to keep the work going, you need to, immediately, we'd encourage you to start working on your new strategic plan, even with the comprehensive visit coming in 2023. So we are going to do that, and here's a short timeline, I thought I would share with you, some of the major objectives we'll be working on as we go forward with the development of this new strategic plan. I'm very excited about this because it'll be the first opportunity, I think, that we've had to really sit down and look at our mission and our vision, and then, this is a comprehensive effort, so it'll be across campus and also involving the community in the development of this new plan. But one of the recommendations that was made by the Higher Learning Commission is to, you know, have 12 to 16 or so members, not 40-plus, but 12 to 16 on a, on a steering committee that will help develop the plan and guide the plan, lead the plan. Also, one of the best practice recommendations was to select a facilitator outside of campus to help with that, and so we've approached, again, Rick Melmer to visit with in terms of his interest level and maybe helping us with the development through this coming year of that plan. So we'll launch it in August, that's at startup. We have a number of advisory groups that come on campus, about 300 business and industry representatives, so we thought that would be a great time to start talking with them about a development of a new strategic plan and ideas and recommendations that they have. We'll, we'll take all that work through focus groups, surveys, other information and data gathering in September and October and November, and then in December, we'll pull together a group based on the information that we have and actually rough out a draft of the plan. So, and then taking that forward, that rough draft of the plan, sharing that in January and February with the internal campus, and then you all will be involved with that process as well, obviously. Hopefully, fingers crossed, but finalizing that plan in March, and then ideally, we would like to share that plan externally in April, right before the end of the academic year. So a lot of activity there, a lot of work to be done in addition to launch of some of our programming and the development now of the new strategic plan going forward. So with that, I guess I would wrap up that, my report, and if you have any questions, I'd certainly try to answer them for you. Thank you.
What a great year, and I mean, 10 new programs in three years, that has to be almost a record for an institution of higher education because usually, one in 10, three years is kind of an accomplishment. But you, you always respond to what the community and our workforce needs in this area, so thank you, because we know that is not easy, and you're dealing with the governmental entity of the tech board and the other institutions in our state competing for those programs. So thank you for going forward with all of those.
Well, thank you for your support, and you really have to give the credit to Dr. Valdez, the academic team for doing the work, because it's easy to stand up here and talk about a new program, entirely different matter to pull the curriculum together, to do the research, and then to try to move it through the different levels that we have to move through. And not always are these plans for new programs received, I guess, positively, so we, we have to make certain that we're not duplicating other campuses and when we may duplicate another campus offerings, to show that the workforce demand is there and that this region is, needs those programs, and I think that's where we've, we've been, you know, very successful. So we've got some strong help and support on our tech board. Diana Vanderwoody from Sanford, she's a vice president there at Sanford, does an outstanding job for us, has been a strong advocate for Southeast Tech, so really want to recognize her help and support. And Dana Dykhouse as the chair is phenomenal. You could not have a better person and a better leader for the, all of the texts than Dana, helping us at the state level at the leadership. And again, thank you, Dr. Valdez and his team do a lot of the work, the heavy lifting that goes into that is done by that team, so.
And the results show that, how our numbers as an institution are with students compared to other institutions that were actually serving what the students want. That's why our numbers are better than theirs, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, you bet, and there's always more to do. So there's already new programs that we are working on, you know, based on input that we have received over the past several months that we'll be bringing forward. Benjamin mentioned one of those great opportunities, community health worker, and there are a couple others that I think, you know, representatives, industry representatives in the region have asked us to take a look at, so we'll be doing that.
I think one thing that we, we
I think one thing that we say a lot and we just really can't say enough about is the generosity of the community of Sioux Falls and our business partnerships. And, you know, you think about places like McCrossan's and Vicor. And those aren't places that Southeast Tech can build and pretend to have students go and work at. And they're not as meaningful either. And so when you look at it from a budgetary standpoint, there's no way we could come up with a barn with animals of all sizes that we can be taking care of in a reasonable way with students, you know, a couple hours a day. And so the fact that we have these organizations and businesses in Sioux Falls who are welcoming and are inviting us into their space to say, hey, we want you to use our space and we want to be able to hire people because they're so well-trained. And sometimes, like, our simulation labs are amazing, but there's something about talking to a person and there's, you know, working with a real animal and talking to a real patient or using the actual equipment. And so the fact that we have so many businesses now, and hopefully we'll have so many in the future, that will give us that opportunity to really share that and collaborate, I think, is, can't put a value on that from a community and from an educational standpoint for the students and the employers that hopefully will get those students who are comfortable in those environments and have the skills to work with people and the machinery and the animals and everybody else. So kudos to the Sioux Falls community, because I just think that, you know, you hear it a lot, but it's, if you really sit and think about it, it's so true. And there are communities who would have these dreams but could never actually make them come to fruition because they don't have the community backing and the businesses to come forward and the organizations to say, let's walk together with this and make this happen.
Well, we'll continue to lean on our business and industry partners. And I think, again, one of the, one of the best barometers of that has been the Build Dakota numbers and seeing those industry sponsor scholarships increasing every year is great to see. So hopefully, that will continue in the future. But we are, we are very, very blessed to work and operate in Sioux Falls and to have the reception we have in terms of meeting with business and industry and finding ways, finding a way to make some of these programs possible. So we'll continue to do that and we'll hopefully bring more reports to you in the coming months on some of these further discussions that are underway.
Awesome. No more other questions. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the 2021 year-end summary report?
So moved.
Second, a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Thank you.
Under the campus technology report, Eric.
President Mcison, members of the board, thanks for giving me the opportunity to do a quick overview of a few projects that we've got going on campus with our technology. Obviously, a lot of challenges right now with equipment, laptops, getting equipment here. So that's one of the, probably the biggest hurdle we have with, with all these projects we have going on on campus. The first one I wanted to give you an update on is our campus classroom distance technology equipment that we're installing in a handful of classrooms on campus. We went forward and tried to select some well-high-used classrooms that not only are faculty and staff use, but also the public on campus. We have a lot of outside entities that are on our campus on an everyday basis. So we've, we've chosen seven rooms across campus, some being larger rooms that can be used both for classes but also for outside entities, as I just talked about. But also, we've been working with academics on some of our smaller classrooms where we are going to basically go through and do some demo classrooms, outfit them with technology that we've discussed. But then being able to pivot if we need to, if there's other things that need to be added to it, didn't work, they want something else to it before we expand anymore of these across campus. Our plan is to do that. Once we get these in place, obviously, get feedback from our faculty, staff, and whoever else is using it. And then looking at different classrooms throughout the rest of the campus. So we have multiple of these classrooms in buildings, so they're accessible for others that need to use it. Just a little bit of a rundown on some of the equipment that's going in there, and I'll give you a high-level overview of how it's going to work. We're going to be adding some very large LED eighty-five-inch monitors to those classrooms. We're going to be using the existing projectors that are already in there. We'll also be adding a teacher podium in the front with some of the same technology that's in this, in this room with the touchscreen to control all the technology that's in there. Multiple webcams, which will be mounted, a lot like the ones that are in this, in this room, but they'll be based off the size of the classroom. So there may be two in a regular classroom, one on the teacher and then one that goes out to the students. But then in our larger ones, there could be multiple ones depending on the size of that. The other thing that we'll be adding into there is audio, which will be broadcasted through the, through the classrooms. Not a huge, as big an issue in some of the smaller classrooms, but obviously, a big thing in our large classrooms that we got to be able to hear what's going on in there. And then with that, they have these new technology, it's out there. It's a speaker array that, depending, again, on the size, there'll be different microphones that are in the ceiling, and then those can be programmed based off of who's speaking. So if somebody in the back of the room is speaking, whatever cam that's focused to them will focus on that person. So that'll be, be able to do that. So the nice thing about that is, is mostly across campus, we use Microsoft Teams. We do have some people that are using Zoom. But with this, what we're doing is we're integrating it natively with what that means to, is to Microsoft Teams. So what that will do is with the touchscreens that are in there, faculty, staff can actually send, you know, their meeting requests to that room. So when they walk in there, everything will be set. They can launch their, their Microsoft Teams class based off of the touchscreen that's in there, and it'll be, it'll be really easy for them. For the people that are using Zoom or WebEx or whatever it is, we felt that we needed to have that ability, too, especially with the people that are coming from outside entities. So with that, it's all they have to do is connect a USB cord into the, into the system, and they can use their laptop that's there. So the nice thing about this is, is that, like I said earlier, with the, with the webcams that are in there and then the large monitors and the projector. So envision the teacher standing in the front of it, they can share their content on the projector, up on the large screens that are in there. The students that are off, are not on campus, they can, you know, if in a Zoom meeting or Teams, it'll show them on that, on that screen. So as this teacher is doing their lecture or whatever it is in their class, that the teacher will be showing to the people that are on, not on campus. But the nice thing about that is, is the people that are in the classroom on campus will be getting the lecture also. So as, if somebody from off-campus has a question, it'll sense that, it'll put their, their picture up on the screen, they can ask the question, and they can still have interaction with the on-campus teacher and the students that are there. So the nice thing about this is, is, yeah, it's, you know, a lot of this came to light with, with the pandemic. But the thing that we've worked with, with academics especially, is that this, this technology is not going to go away. What you can see what's happening is, we can have, we have teachers now that are teaching both on-campus sections, and then they may be teaching the same section online. So a lot of times what they do is they teach the class, and then they have to go back and record or voice over their PowerPoint so they can share that out with their online students. With this technology that we're putting in place, what we're going to be able to do is have the ability, you know, where the, we have the online or the on-campus section going on during the middle of the day. We could have the ability of those online students, if they're available, we understand that their schedules might not line up, they can log into the class, listen to the live lecture, be involved with the collaboration with the students that are in the classroom and off the campus. But the nice thing about this also is then the teacher will be able to, as they're doing that lecture, record that lecture so they don't have to come back and do it again. And the students that can't make that class that are online will have the ability to go and listen to that whole lecture that's out there. So I think it's a great thing that's happening. It's something we've wanted to do for quite some time. Obviously, funding and other things that hasn't allowed us to do it. But I think we've got a good, good design in place, and we're hoping to get that in place before classes start in the fall, but it's all dependent on getting equipment here. So the next thing that we're doing that's going to also play in well with this is we're going to be upgrading our wireless network on campus. Obviously, we've been, we've had a wireless, wireless cross-campus for, you know, for quite a few years. We are going to update all our access points to the latest Wi-Fi standard that's out there that's going to allow this technology to work. You know, we feel that today with what's there, it would work, but this, with this is to ensure that it's there. It's going to give us more throughput, it's going, the bandwidth's going to be there. More, more devices are always coming to campus and being able to connect to it. So with that, then the expansion part of this is, we're also, with this project, we're going to expand our wireless to our outdoor facilities across campus. Right now, it's very minimal. If you come to one of our parking lots and you park close to one of our buildings, you may be able to get access. But we're going to be able to do, we'll probably cover about ninety percent of our campus outside. What that's going to allow us to do is we have quite a few programs, our surveying program, for example, our Hortur, they have outside labs. Surveying does a lot of their surveying outside. And with their changes in the technology in the last few years, they've either had to carry a hotspot or use their phone, because everything they do with surveying now instantly gets uploaded to their, to their, their software program. So we're allowing this, with expansion, with this expansion outside is going to make those programs even better. Hortur has a, a big lab that's to the very south of our campus, south of our Ed Wood Center, something they've wanted for quite some time, it's going to give them access out there, too. So that'll be a very good thing. And then with that also, we'll be implementing some software with Network Access Control, which will help us increase our security. So when, like we said, we not only are students on campus, we have, we have border region students that are in campus that use our network, we have outside entities that come in based off of what, how they're connecting to our network, it'll give them the access that they need based off of how they're logging in. So that'll be a really good project for us. In addition to that, we're also going to be upgrading all of our campus switches. Basically, it's the backbone of our campus for, for our internets and any bandwidth needs that we'll, that we'll need. Something that, in the past, we've never been able to go through. We've, we've been, we've been running switches for quite some time. We, we try to each year do, do different upgrades on them, but this allow us to have that infrastructure in place that's necessary to have this, this technology to, to work. This is the project that we're going to kick off first. Some of the equipment's already been delivered, we're still waiting on some of it. This one will ensure that the success of those other projects will, will be there, but we need to get this one done first. So what that will do is we'll be reviewing all of our access control levels. What that means, again, back on the security side of it, is depending what's plugged into a port or what's connecting to our wireless, making sure that those get the right access. So we'll be reviewing all of our security policies in place with that. With today's world, it's, it's something you always have to do. We'll also be working with the vendor on this, so we'll have outside eyes looking at this to make sure that we're, if there's any holes that we have now, make sure that we're getting closed on those. The last update I wanted to give you, and I appreciate you, there was a purchase order on our consent agenda today on some laptops. So we, each year, we do student, student laptops. And then this year, we also add in our, in our budgetary cycle to replace faculty laptops. With our student laptops, what we normally do with that is about, usually about May, we try to wait as long as we can to see what our numbers are to order laptops for resale to our students. With the chip shortage that, obviously, most people are hearing, it's across everything, any electronics, a lot of cars that have them, there's a shortage in the chip side of things. So we started working with our vendor about March and April. So we're about three months earlier than we normally do. Got our purchase order in, hadn't heard much on it. Finally got word last week from our vendor that they weren't going to be able to fulfill our laptop. It was just under four hundred laptops for our students, so we had to pivot very quickly. We started working out, working with different vendors to see if we could somehow get what we needed for our students. Our faculty ones, we're going to, those, those can come later in the year, and we can, we can flip those out as needed. But the student ones are obviously really important, because they need those before they start their classes. And we do have, most of our programs are bring-your-own-laptop requirements, but a lot of our students still purchase a laptop through us. So we have to have, you know, we, in the fourteen years I've been there, it's always been my big worry is making sure we have those laptops, not running out of them, making sure the students have them in a timely fashion. And this year, it obviously, it hit us, but it was soon enough here where we were able to work with a vendor. We're going to, we've been working with HP on this one with our students, we're going to have to move over to Lenovo to be able to get a laptop that's comparable to what we have. And with the approval of that, that purchase order, we've got them held back, that'll go out tomorrow, and hopefully by the end of next week or the week after, we'll have those, which will be, will good. All of our images that we have for the, for those laptops are ready to go. And I just wanted to say a big thank you to one of my staff members, Gerard Strout, director of our infrastructure, worked a lot with me last week, and he really went out above and beyond to be able to try and get these laptops here, and, and we'll be ready to go with our students. So that's about what I have today. Like I said, most of these projects are really going to be dependent on getting the equipments, obviously, and then getting, some of it's going to have to happen during the academic year, which we've tried to do a lot of this stuff in the summer, but we'll just, you know, the key word that I always tell our, our department or staff is just being flexible. I mean, we just have to be able to, you know, as things hit us, you've got to take it and figure out what's the best way to do it. You may have to do it in an evening, or we might have to come out on the weekend and get it done. But being flexible will be key to getting this stuff completed. So any questions on what I've covered today?
That's a lot, and it's great. It's exciting for the campus because, you know, obviously, with all we've, all went through with COVID, some of the positives include the education moving forward with what the rest of the world has with computers and using those in, you know, for online courses and so forth. So I'm excited for that opportunity, especially when you look at the demographic changes of part-time students. That means they probably have another job, they probably maybe have a family, and having that online opportunity to check back in. Plus, having those questions, we all know when you hear other students ask a question, that might spur some other things for you to think about as well, not just having the teacher teach to you. So I think those are all exciting things for the school. So thank you very much for all the extra work on that. And students first with getting those laptops changed order to get the right one, get them in time. So I appreciate that.
No problem.
Yeah, and I think with the extension of the more outdoor parts of the Wi-Fi will be amazing, because like you said, those programs, they really rely on that. It's not like, oh, it's nice to have, it's, it's a really need to have. And so that, I think that students and the instructors will really appreciate not having to carry something else with them to make sure that they have access and, and getting that true. You know, when they're on the job, they're going to have access to things like that. So again, just more real-life experience for them and something that they don't think about, they can think about the, the job at hand. So.
Yep.
Exciting changes.
Yep. It's good opportunities, you know, we've, we've had some of these plans in place, and we've been able to leverage some of the, the HERC dollars that we've had out there for some of these projects that it's, it's been, it's been a big thing. So, you know, being able to, being able to do some of these things and ensuring that that's there. And like you said, with the, with the, with the pandemic, there's been, in my mind, obviously, there is, you can focus on all kinds of negatives on it. But there's also been some positives that came out to it. And we were well-positioned when it came, you know, being, having Microsoft Teams out there. We had to get some people up to speed, but the, but the infrastructure was there for it. And what that's done is our, our faculty and our staff have embraced it, and they've seen different ways of how can we use it. And there's, there's, I mean, it's endless on the different ways of how our faculty are using it and being able to have some of this equipment permanently in those classrooms instead of them having to haul stuff to classrooms and maybe having a, you know, a, you know, a speaker that's sitting in there or something else that's there. This stuff, they'll be able to walk in, launch it, and it should, it should work really smoothly for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to acknowledge the technology update report?
So moved.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Is there anything else to report? Sing then, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
A motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. You adjourn.